Mayor Potem, if I may start this call. Guillermo Madrid?
Here.
Mary Garcia?
Here.
Gloria Rodriguez?
Here.
Maria Reyes?
Here.
Jessica Gander?
Here.
Mayor Potem, we have call.
Do you think the motion to move five through 12 and then have item agenda number four after seconded by Guillermo Madrid?
There's a motion on the floor.
Do we hear it, Cindy?
And just for clarification, this is five through 12 by executive then on the call?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion from Mary Garcia to move items five through 12, have executive, and then number four after, seconded by Guillermo Madrid?
Yes.
Guillermo Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Jessica Gander?
Yes.
The motion is approved. We got one person signed up for a public comment. That is Lesuke Ramos. Lesuke Ramos?
And that is for open?
For public comment. You have three minutes.
Yes, number one, I would just like to say that during our last meeting, I heard a comment stated by District Councilman, District Four, that I probably was apologizing. No, I was not apologizing. It's in the fact that we had an urgent apology for not adhering to the advice that I told you in regards to following procedures so that you would not have to go through what you actually went through, having to pay and go the route and stop that project there at the Socorro Dog Temptation Park. Number two, quite an embarrassment when it is that we have a city manager that has not instructed our staff to provide us with the forms necessary who we want to use of facilities. I asked for permission to use this facility to meet with two representatives from the YMC to talk about a project for the city of Socorro. Pardon me because people from the higher ups recognize me and respect me highly and asked those representatives to meet with me. Those funds are for the city of Socorro and I wanted to introduce them to our staff. However, quite an embarrassment for whoever it was, but I did speak to our city manager. Why did they send a policeman to escort to have me leave this facility? With that, it's a total embarrassment for not just me, but for them and our city. I think that you need to handle this more appropriately and I am asking for an apology because I think that when somebody gives you the permission and then you send the policeman instead of doing it in a real professional way, Mr. Soto, I really would appreciate that you... Okay, city manager, please take the courtesy to do it in a proper way. There's phones, you can have the secretary come and give me your message, but please never handle it in that way again. Again, I think that you mentioned our precious Desa Chavez during your presentation. I think that if he would be here, he would ask you to resign and never come back because he would never would have treated us as citizens of his community in such a manner. Thank you.
Do we have another motion for public comment?
Which one is the next one?
Public hearing.
Okay.
Number six.
Number six. Public hearing on amendment one to ordinance two ninety-three in ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, adopting an amended budget appropriating funds to allocate money received from Horizon Mass Effect in the administration budget for the city of Socorro. Is it possible?
Can open it up. Now we have public comment at six oh five.
Anybody? Do you think the public needs to public here for the mass man?
Well, actually, I have some questions about the amount appropriating those funds to the, you know, from, that you receive from the Horizon Mass Settlement. We, the community, would like to know how much the settlement was because there's no documentation whatsoever provided to us about the amounts and what the city will actually be receiving from or keeping for the, for our city from that settlement and what is going to be paid out to the attorney, the law firm. So I'm asking, I know there's, do I have to speak for three minutes or can I receive an answer from somebody?
Can you answer?
No, this is for the...
Public hearing.
Yeah, eight and ten of public hearings, this is in the back of the floor.
I apologize.
Well, I wanted to say that how can I make a public comment if we have no information that has been provided to us regarding the amounts? I think it would be appropriate if there were to be some kind of reform, you know, presented to us, letting us know the amounts being paid out to a law firm for, you know, what we would actually be keeping for the city itself. And again, I will say that out of the settlement, I believe that we had the, our city attorney, attorney that could have handled that settlement and worked that out instead of hiring an outside well firm from California. So I hope that you take into consideration giving the benefit of the doubt to our own attorneys that should be handling those types of, I'd say, legal situations.
Number seven. Number seven, discussion action to auto-agree with Redflex Traffic Systems Incorporated for traffic camera safety program.
Mayor, council, I'll refer to the city attorney, he's been working on the items.
This is the same group that you've seen a number of different times with a few minor revisions. I will cover the major provisions of the agreement. There was a concern expressed previously that, and basically this is a situation where you would erect electronic signalization monitoring on the railway that goes through the city at the major intersections. This system, and we might have Mark Inzak here with Redflex to explain some of the technicalities as to how this works, you recall that you saw some video and this type thing regarding how the system works, but basically it's an electronic monitoring system that monitors the railroad crossing. And if an individual in an automobile crosses that railroad crossing, this monitoring system will record it. If the individual crosses the railroad crossing at a time when the lights are flashing, this system will record it and flag it and send it through a computer system to the city's records so that a civil citation and penalty can be assessed against that individual for driving through flashing red lights at the railroad crossing. And as part of that process, there would be costs associated with the fine or penalty and then there would be a portion of that cost that would be paid to Redflex, the company that installs and operates the signalization system. For example, if you were using up to a fine of, let's say, a hundred and twenty-five dollars per incident, then Redflex would receive two thousand five hundred dollars per month plus twelve dollars for each one of those notices issued for violation. It doesn't take very many violations to pay its way, but if you don't have a single violation issued during the month, then you don't owe Redflex anything. They get paid on a cash neutral basis pursuant to the terms of the contract. So you're not in a situation where you're going to get to the point that you're on the tab for a big bunch of money that you require to pay Redflex per month unless there are violations and you get paid on those violations. Now, the issue that came up before was what happens if this is not producing? That everyone decides all of a sudden to obey the rules and no one drives through the railroad crossing and it's not producing anything, we're having to dedicate computer equipment and personnel to process the fines and penalties which are not happening and it's a big headache and it's not profitable. The contract provides that the city may choose to terminate the contract and that in the event that the city does choose to terminate the contract, the city would have to pay a penalty to Redflex. But the penalty to Redflex is limited to what the city has received in a designated period of time for fines and penalties. So if it's not producing and it's a, your headache and you won't terminate it, then you can terminate it and if it hasn't been producing anything, you don't owe Redflex anything. So that's the system. They seem to be comfortable enough with what has happened in other parts of Texas and Subwater Sound, you've heard the presentation on all of that, they seem to be comfortable enough with that to take the risk that this will be productive and will be a profitable venture for them. If it is a profitable venture for them, it will be a profitable venture for the city because you get a portion of those fines and penalties. Yes, ma'am?
How many days and notice do you have to give them to terminate the contract?
No, I believe it's thirty days. Because that was what, that was what we wrote into the agreement after the, the last time that we revised it. Twenty days, I'm sorry. You can terminate with twenty days written of this. And then there is a provision in the contract regarding termination that the amount, notwithstanding any other terms of this agreement, the amount to be paid by the customer to Redflex pursuant to this section, and that's the removal and termination section, shall not exceed the amount which the customer has received for the previous twelve months from paid citations attributable to the intersection approach pursuant to the provisions of this agreement. So you're on the hook. If you decide to terminate it, you're on the hook for whatever the city income, the city has received from the citations for the previous twelve months. The motivation being, if it's producing, you wouldn't have a motivation to terminate it. If it's not producing, there wouldn't be that much money produced in the last twelve months anyway.
I think the last time we met on it, you discussed that there was an issue of road construction where there wouldn't be traffic going on there. I don't know if you recall that?
Yes, there was an issue and Mark is more familiar with that, that there is a situation where you would have to deal with the railroad, it's a state highway with the state regarding the construction process and he's more familiar with that than I am as in what is, you know, has kind of what the disruption has been in the past. You want to speak to that, Mark?
Yeah, in terms of just the installation of words, you know, of...
Well, the viability on that, what I'm concerned with, at the time, I think that question was answered to Mr. Wallace in regards to, it's not producing because there's a closure on the road because of construction. A case in point, Horizon, they weren't engaged, so probably more likely it won't be as much traffic as there should. So the liability as far as the money coming in, would have an impact in microeconomic.
Now, it would be costly for, there's a provision in there, if there's no money coming in, then there's no money going out as far as the season, sorry.
Yeah, that was one of our biggest concerns the last time we talked about it and I guess we reviewed it pretty good. And as far as construction, the construction that would be, I'm saying the movement of the cameras, that would be all on the...
That's our responsibility. And we work with your contract engineers and wherever here is local plus tech staff, so we work with all the applicable parties to make sure that we do what we need to do to get the system installed.
And the contract obligations is for a term of certain amount of years?
Five years.
Five years.
Of course, you can terminate it pursuant to the twenty day provision, but it's five years initially.
Yeah, and typically our standard agreements are five years. It takes us usually seven years to recoup the unamortized expense of the system. Nobody's going to sign a seven year contract, so there's multiple extension provisions in there, options. And again, with termination for convenience, it's, yeah, basically ad will.
Gets five years with two year extension provisions there after the sort of amounts.
Well, that's a positive thing as far as I'm concerned, not a problem of the city council, but I look at it as a positive thing not only for the community, but also for the community, the police department.
Well, I mean, if something happens in the city and, you know, you think they went through that intersection within a certain period of time, they can produce a photograph of every single license plate that crossed that railroad during that period of time. So, you know, if you're in a situation where a crime took place down the street and you think that was the, you know, the course of exit, then, you know, they would have a record that you could retrieve of every single people that crossed that railroad. The other situation, and I don't know that much about this, Mark had to speak to it, is the potential to get a no whistle zone as far as the train is concerned. And some folks love trains, some folks don't care so much for that train whistle, but Mark may want to speak to what those requirements are. I think it requires one of these at every one of the crossings, but nonetheless, that would be something else since it comes right through the heart of the city that might be our...
I think the only thing positive for the city of Socorro is welcome by this council. Even if it's just one person, they say, you know, it's worth it. And also, if the city is scanning, it's, you know, it's like a insurance policy to the people not violating the law. So everything is, that's positive, it's welcome.
Unfortunately, Representative Scarsica couldn't be here today, he's up in Stratford, Texas.
And as far as the no whistle situation, how does that work?
Yeah, the, the system itself is recognized, it's called an alternative safety measure. So the FRA recognizes that to qualify for a quiet zone, one of the alternative safety measures is law enforcement and/or photo enforcement. Unfortunately, you can't have law enforcement at a rail crossing twenty-four hours a day to maximize driver compliance, so that's why they recognize photo enforcement. If you can show sustainable benefit of reduced incidents and violations, you can actually then petition them to have that qualify as a quiet zone. So again, it's, it's not panacea, it's not an end-all be-all, but you could possibly qualify for that quiet zone status. Good to know.
What kind of length term are we looking at too if you do, you know, start the program? What are you looking at?
Typical implementation with the railroad itself, I'd say ninety to one hundred and twenty days, give or take. So going through all the process with the engineering work, getting the approvals, the interconnect with the railroad, so we have to get permission to actually get the feed from them so we know the lights are flashing. So I'd say ninety to one hundred and twenty days is about standard.
But now, the railroad is supported.
Oh, they're supported.
They were here in Mass in the previous meeting where it was presented, they were very supportive.
It's just the wheels moving.
Do we have to have a, some type of advertisement somewhere to let the public know that these cameras are defective, just like when we put a stoplight or something, tell you have to let the drivers know ahead of time that there would be something that, a warning?
Yeah. Yeah, it's recommended, you know, generally we do a thirty day warning period where we don't issue notices, we issue a courtesy warning to violators or potential violators. We recommend signage, just as they approach it, adding signs and say photo enforcers and obviously working with, if you have a public information officer.
David O'Pain, I'm with him.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll work with you to provide you the documentation to do the outreach to the community, whether it's news releases or whatnot.
Will we see placed at all railroad crossings, things like that?
It's, I don't know if the law get it, you know, we'll probably come up, we've done some justification reports in the past, we might do that again where we video survey the issue. I think we did it three years ago, so it's been some time, we might revisit that. So I, I wouldn't say all of them again, I'd say maybe two or three of them of the five, give or take. I know Horizon is a big issue for New Pacific as well as Moon Road and let's see, the third one, that was a big one. There were three that were like the major priority for that. I doubt all five will ultimately happen.
Will there be a traffic study to...
Yeah, we do, essentially what we do is we do an analysis, so we come out and actually quantify, we'll look at a twelve to twenty-four hour period to actually look at how many violations are occurring, the type of violations are occurring, are people going around the gates, are they stopping on the tracks, you know, what, what's happening? So then we provide it to the police department, kind of make a unilateral decision with the department, where does it make sense? These two, these three, these four locations, let's do it, let's do it, to provide that to you.
I don't recall where I read this, it was just recently.
Sure.
There was a survey done where they're saying that the railroad traffic is going to increase considerably in the near future.
Sure.
And like I said, I don't recall where I read it, it was just recently.
Yep.
And with that in mind, it's, the problem will...
Increase.
...be on the rise, it will be an increase.
Yep, and I know the last time Special Agent Scarsica was here, he mentioned that, that current volumes are down compared to past numbers, but it's, it's starting to uptick and I think, I'm trying to remember if there's fifty trains a day right now, but I think at its high, I think it was at seventy, so I think he said it's getting back to that number and again, it's more trains means more potential for issues to happen.
Yeah, he did say high was in the seventies.
In the seventies, yeah.
I remember being pressed with seventy something being...
It's down, but yeah, he said it's coming back to where the previous high was coming in town.
MPO, yeah. MPO, yeah. Yeah, that's true.
And I think the speeds are pretty high coming through Socorro too, the train speeds themselves.
And just structurally and administratively, the contract requires that Redflex provide your court system with support for training and support. It requires them to provide an expert for the purpose of proving up these citations. Once you start issuing the citations from the standpoint of evidence in your municipal court system, in order for the court system to accept this electronically made record, it will be necessary for somebody to explain how that is done and how that is reliable. The contract requires that they supply that for a period of time. We didn't double the period of time they provided in the contract and split the difference in it and, but it should be plenty of time for your court system to become familiar with it and for your police department to become familiar with it so that they can have someone who can actually understand it well enough to provide that explanation should it become necessary in the future.
And are you referring to like court proceedings?
Yes, yes.
Is it a court procedure to support the validation of...
Right, of fine.
Because what cost to the city?
It's no cost. I think it's no cost for up to nine months.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, and we train, so we'll, we'll train the police department so that they're experts on the system. So we give you a period where you have someone internally who's an expert on the system. So it's, and also we try to work with municipal courts where we work with them to introduce the evidence and get judicial notice so that they're very familiar with, and I know Judge Madalis is a big supporter of this, so to get them familiar with this technology, how it works, so that they are equally as experts as much as the expert witness from law enforcement.
I'll play that there was that, the city said that, based on the fact that the community was totally against it or what?
In terms of rail enforcement? We haven't actually seen anyone shoot down a rail enforcement program. Those, it's different from red light cameras. I don't think we see the same level of public scrutiny because it's difficult to argue that it's not about safety when you're talking about at grade crossing collisions potentially, you know, reducing those type of violations. So knock on wood, in our experience, we haven't really seen the same vehement visceral hatred for rail enforcement as we see for other cameras. And I know unfortunately in the county, not just Socorro, there's, I think just in the last six months or two fatalities, not just at crossings, but, you know, around crossings. So it's, it's been a big issue here, unfortunately.
Yeah, we just had a shot of...
Struck.
Yeah, struck, you know, like I said.
Yeah.
So, you know, if you look at it from the point that, as the mayor mentioned, when it's one shot of, of light, it's, you know, it's dangerous.
I know, I think the judge is front and principal got it. Yeah. So, you know, it's, it doesn't matter one light, that's what it takes.
Yes, there's nine months, nine months that the federal services to the municipal board is necessary.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we wish to approve item number seven by Mary Garcia, seconded by Guillermo Madrid? Guillermo Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Jessica Gander?
Yes.
Item number seven is approved.
Item number eight, please, request an exception pursuant to calling for a public hearing on ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, providing good administrative and automatic traffic signal and little railroad crossing enforcement imposing civil penalties for violations, establishing administrative enforcement procedures, providing for appeal and judicial review, establishing traffic safety, and other matters related.
Mayor? May I? We wish to approve item number eight by Jessica Gander, seconded by Mary Garcia. Guillermo Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes? Jessica Gander?
Yes.
Item number eight is approved.
Item number nine, set agreed in adoption on amendment one to ordinance two ninety-three in ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, adopting an amended budget appropriating funds to allocate money received from Horizon Mass Effect in the administration budget for the city of Socorro. Ms. Reyes?
Is all this money going to be put into administration or are we going to go ahead and separate it accordingly? How much is going to benefit the city without it going out?
Mayor, council, you had the ordinance in your package, minute one, you have previously approved the, the settlement contract with the Horizon Mass. This part of it is only the, the upfront cash that the city is receiving.
How much was that, sir?
Two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And of that, two hundred and twenty-five thousand will be attorney fees and so the city will net out fifty thousand dollars.
Attorney fees to Mr. Wallace?
To, to the, to the fund that, to the attorney firm that handles the litigation for us.
That would be Mr. Tagel.
Yes, yes. And you see in the amendment that how much is going to legal fees, how much is the service contract, place of settlements, and grant in-kind matches where we place the two hundred and seventy-five thousand. So we, we are paying as a, the firm's two hundred and twenty-five thousand overall. Some of it we have paid previously in the last fiscal year and so out of this current amount of money, we're paying them a hundred and ninety thousand because we had paid them thirty-five thousand previously.
Did we not agree to a hundred thousand previously?
No. No, we never agreed.
Not for this one?
We never agreed to the amount.
That was not for the representative?
And I want to say to you that, that the total bill that they submitted to us was three... three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So they, they gave us overall a thirty percent discount on that bill.
So the total amount we're gonna pay is two hundred and twenty-five?
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That includes the thirty-five thousand, thirty million, too?
That's correct. That's done in addition to, that includes above.
Includes above, okay.
Fair. Mayor?
Mr. Andra?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve, and I also want to say that, that we hired specific attorneys to deal with water issues to combat the Horizon Mud when they actually sued us. And so I, I think it's childish to say, well, I wish the money had gone to, to Wallace's firm as opposed to these special attorneys firm, to me, that's, that's silly and it's childish, and, and the reason we got these specific attorneys is because they were water attorneys, they dealt with water issues before. And, and then the amount we paid them, I also want to point out that it's not taxpayer money. We won in courts if they had to pay us. So the money we utilized to pay our attorneys, if we're paying our attorneys, is not City of Socorro money, it's Horizon Mud money that's paying for our attorneys. So, again, I think this whole issue becomes childish when we start trying to, well, how much did you pay them? Even though nobody wants to point out that we're paying with Horizon Mud, municipal utility district money, not City of Socorro money, and then the whole argument of, well, I wish our attorneys had got it that way. Well, again, it's, we, we're taking on a big entity, a water entity, and water districts are in lawsuits all the time because of the scarce resource of water, the real grass, county water improvement district, regular fights of Colorado water improvement district over money. So, so these, these are big entities when we deal with the water end. And I'm just glad that our staff, and I do know that Mr. Wallace also had oversight on looking at it, that our staff, our water attorneys, Mr. Wallace, our administration, were able to take care of the citizens of Socorro, protect our interests, make sure the water that's flowing is not sewage water and is treated at a very high level so it doesn't pose a risk to this community, as was gonna happen before this council took up the responsibility. And, and I do think that had it been any other council, those sentiments we heard today would have, would have happened. That water would have flowed, it would have been sewage water, and this council would have said, well, you know, we, they're bigger than us, you know, they're bigger than Socorro, so what is, you know, there's nothing we could do. Instead, this council said, no, we're gonna step up to the plate, we're gonna bring in professional attorneys to deal with water issues, and we know it. And so that's the reason I'm making motion to approve it, and I'm glad we're paying them Horizon Mud money.
I just wanted to add one more comment to, to Mr. Andra, and that is that, that there are provisions in there for future use of water by the city, of which they're gonna pay us to take the water. So there are other financial incentives for the city at the point that the city's ready to use the water for whatever purposes we define that water for. So there are future financial considerations that are gonna impact the city positively.
Mr. Andra, you are entitled to your opinion, and I have the right to ask any question I want, at any time I feel that I want to know, you know, regardless of how you feel, I will speak up my mind and I will ask the questions that I want to know answers to. Thank you.
In, in a nutshell, what was supposed to be, or what it is Horizon had planned, Horizon Mud, turned out to be more or less a blessing disguised because we're gonna get paid to take that water and it's gonna be highly treated. So, it wasn't a detriment, it was, it was something positive that came out of it, and it's simply because we use the resources that we have. Good attorneys, good counsel, and we think of the community first and foremost. And before we do anything, we research it and give legal advice. It's not something that's done just out of spite or anything, it's something that we have to do. And as Representative Andra says, you know, we heard a lot of, you know, they're too big for us and this and that. Yeah, that's true, we heard that. But that didn't keep us from doing the right thing, and I think we did do the right thing, and we were, we came out winning on this issue. And we'll proceed with the same issues on that, possibly.
Thank you.
Mayor, please. It's very sad sometimes to see people in the audience after, you know, legal advice is being said, after we have explained things in the way it is and the way it was, and to see people in the audience just nod their head like, no, it's not true. We, they probably had to do, and we came out winning. We're here to protect the city, the people, the children, they are all over playing in that, in that water. And you're not going to, we know that we did the right thing, and no matter how much we explain, some people will not understand. You know, so we know that we did the right thing, we came on top, we protected the city, the people, for now and in the future of Socorro, and it's very sad that some people will never get it. I'd like to raise the motion.
We have a motion, yes, thank you. And we have a second by Mary Garcia to approve item number nine. Diego Mati?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Claudia Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mary, Maria Reyes, excuse me?
No.
No? Jessica Andra?
Yes.
Okay, item number nine is approved.
Okay. Item number ten, discussion intention to authorize the city of Socorro to reimburse the amount of six thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety cents to the Texas Department of Agriculture under contract number seven two five eight oh one.
Mayor, council, this is a settlement matter that, that occurred some, as a result of a contract that goes back five years. And the council was there and, and the individual staff people who were there are in the exhibits that you have with this matter. They have recently requested us to pay back almost sixteen thousand dollars as a result of the city then not meeting their in kind match requirements because they didn't turn in the paperwork. And in the process of negotiating, we were able to save the city almost, almost ten thousand dollars and reduced this amount to about sixty-six hundred dollars instead of the almost sixteen they asked for. But you could see in the exhibits who, who the, who was responsible for this at the time, if you choose to. But this is purely a settlement matter and a, our, our grant writer did an excellent job of getting this, this settlement down to the number that we're at.
Mr. Andra?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve item number ten by Jessica Andra, seconded by Mary Garcia. Diego Mati?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Jessica Andra?
Yes.
Item number ten is approved.
Item eleven, discussion intention to authorize the mayor, mayor pro temp, in city management to act on the city or non-matters related to Texas, TXD, DUD, contract number seven two nine seven sixty-one.
Yes.
Mr. Andra?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number eleven by Jessica Andra, seconded by Mary Garcia. Diego Mati?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Jessica Andra?
Yes.
Item number eleven is approved.
Item number twelve, excuse us, members.
Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Andra?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn, item number twelve by Jessica Andra, seconded by Mary Garcia. Diego Mati?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Jessica Andra?
Yes.
Item number twelve is deleted.
And we are now going to adjourn.
That is it.
Executive session is six thirty minutes.
Mayor, if you may, make a, someone would like to make a motion. Motion to adjourn to executive?
Second.
Motion to go on to executive by Jessica Andra, seconded by Mary Garcia. Diego Mati?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Jessica Andra?
Yes.
Okay. The city council convenes to executive at six thirty-nine.